All right, why don't we go and call tonight's work session to order? Alex, will I kick it off?
Sure. Right, so Mayor and Council, tonight we have Mike Fletcher, the Executive Director of the 911 District, here to speak with you all. There's been some general concerns about the new radio system. Included in the printouts in front of you, you'll see that there was an email that our interim chief, Davis, sent to Mike Fletcher last week. So these are some of the questions that we were hoping he would address this evening. So he's received this in advance to give him some time to go over those. And Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I just want to thank Mr. Fletcher for being here and to speak to the councilor and the mayor about discussions we've had here at the previous council meeting. So that, I'll let you introduce yourself and be answer some of these questions and discuss the process.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for inviting me here. I appreciate that. And as Alex and the chief mentioned, I did receive the email. There's a series of questions, and so I'll start off with those and your questions, follow-ups. Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, I had the opportunity to meet with you and interim chief Davis and Alexander Rains and somebody else that was on your board. I forget.
President Sean Clark.
Thank you for that. And I found that the information that you shared was just very, kind of gave like a timeline where you've been, where you're going. So if at any point you feel like you want to start with that or interject with that, in addition to these questions, feel free to, I think, just like a general, big picture for this group would be really, really helpful.
Well, I appreciate that. I do, because even preparing for this, before I even got your emails, I was trying to figure out what would be the most effective and informative educational for you. And so I'm still a little foggy. How far back in time do we want to go? Do we want to just focus on what we're doing today and where we're going? Do we want to go back to the formation of the 911 district? What it is, what makes it unique in the state of Oregon? So I'm really at your pleasure.
I think, I think from the beginning would be great.
You can do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
As long as it's not like, you know, a long series and just a brief synopsis.
And I'm absolutely not an authority on all things Columbia 911. I've only been here a little over three years, and so I'm learning all the time about these in the past and curiosities. But Columbia 911 is actually quite unique in the state of Oregon. There are currently 44 primary 911 centers in the state. That's down from 280 20 years ago. And that's just through attrition, solidations, the, we're down to 44. And of those 44, the majority, the overwhelming majority are either owned and operated by a municipality, part of a police department, part of a sheriff's office, and they work under those umbrellas. Another very large section is ORS 190 agencies. Those are IGA-based solidations where a county or a community say, "We want a consolidated dispatch center," and we all agree that we're going to pay for that service. Most unique of the 911 centers in Oregon are special districts. There's only four in the state. Tillamook, Plymouth, Shute's, Columbia. And they are unique because community has voted, citizens themselves have voted, form this special district. They're independent. They are their own governmental agency, have their own tax base. And so Columbia 911 has two primary sources of revenue. We have a permanent tax rate, and then we have a special option levy that we renew every five years. The other most amazing thing about special districts is they charge zero user fees. And every other entity, every other organizational structure, the counties, the municipalities, the 190s, charge each agency user fees. They are substantial, from the hundreds of thousands to the millions per year.
Ask a question on that?
Yes, sir.
So do those other districts that charge the user fees have a tax base?
No.
Okay, so there's.
Yeah, exactly.
The fees being charged, it's just in a different way.
That is correct. And but the difference is, in what, I've lived in this industry for 40 years, and those 911 districts or those 911 centers have to fight for every time that they get because they're literally taking it out of the general funds of police departments or the fire departments, dispatching services. So it's always annual shit fight. So Columbia 911 doesn't have that problem. We don't charge our users for our services. And we do added value services for them regularly. So that's kind of the uniqueness of Columbia 911. We have a Board of Directors, five. They're elected by the community. They're citizens based on zones. And then we have an advisory committee that is appointed by the Board of Directors. And that advisory committee is by state statute, and we follow that. And the, the members of the advisory committee represent every fire district, and they represent every city and community via the police departments, these chiefs, and their designated alternates. We have a full, whole team there. And then we have, obviously, a budget committee. So that's Columbia 911 in the Reader's Digest form. The radio system, I don't have real good understanding. I think I understand how it came to be that Columbia 911 inherited the radio system. And I think that's really what it was inherited. Because prior to 911 being in Oregon, most communities had their own dispatch centers. Most of them were like fire departments, you know, this is before 911, so it was seven-digit numbers. You had to, citizen had to call a separate number for the police department, fire department, ambulance, OSP, didn't dial three digits. And so each community had their own dispatch center. And often, they had their own radios in those communities. By theory, nobody around that can testify this, but I believe that when Columbia 911 was formed, they inherited this cobbled-together radio system. And over the years, they've improved it. The current system that we have today is in 20-plus years old. It served purpose that it was designed to do at that time. Certainly, the community has changed in 20-plus years. There's people living where they didn't used to be. There's commercial enterprises and facilities that didn't, weren't there. And another important factor is construction standards have definitely changed in 20 years. And so as buildings become more efficient, energy, they become less efficient for radio. It's just a byproduct of construction. In 2015, the 911 district conducted, they hired an engineering, engineering firm to do a survey and evaluation of the current radio system. And that turned up lots of information. And ever since 2015, district has been incrementally making system changes and improvements. And that continues to today. Done, they've added receive sites throughout the county, the courthouse. In fact, here, this building has one. Haven Acres purchased a site, this home, and started development of that. And in 2018, well, actually, late 2017, they decided to publish an RFI, for information, to actually start the process of replacing the existing radio system. They published that RFI. Not to, I'm just going to pause that for a moment and continue on with the other upgrades that we are doing since then even. We started upgrading our microwave system. So I don't want to get too technical, but our radio system is really a system of systems. You have radio, which we all kind of know what push-to-talk, that's what we're talking about. But there's actually other components to this system that you don't pay attention to or most people aren't aware of, and that's a microwave system, subsystem, push-to-talk system. We started upgrading that in 2019, and we're continuing to do that today. Those are not inexpensive upgrades. Those are about $250,000 to $300,000 per pop. And we're working on our third one right now. We'll be doing the fourth one starting later, I believe, early winter. So that's going on. Going back to the RFI, so the district published an RFI in 20, late 17, early 18. They received five responses. Three of them were qualified bidders, meaning that they actually own and operate manufactured systems. Those pre-qualified bidders were Codan, eight, Motorola. And so at that point, district has made some practical decisions to kind of pause what they're doing on building sites. We are rebuilding one site that's been in need of refurbishment, probably from the day it was built. But we're in the process of building a new site, actually rebuilding it at its location. He's turning dirt in January. Bits are done, drawings are done, everything's ready to go. RFPs for the civil work is about to go out. I was just reviewing those final documents today. So there is work going on. The RFI process, as I said, was early 18. We conducted public meetings, meetings with our user groups. In 2019, we conducted further interviews with every single stakeholder of the current radio system. And that was really an educational, for me, educational process for me, because I was brand-new here, getting to learn the users, staff, system, works, what doesn't work, what their expectations are moving forward to any new system, I mean, their service areas are because fire district boundaries, ambulance service boundaries are not tied to political boundaries like your quarters of Columbia County. They actually have service areas outside of the quarters of Columbia County. So that's all important when you're designing a new radio system. Or do you need, who do they talk to, who do they want to talk to, but they can't talk to today? So that's all part of that needs assessment for the new system. So that took place during 2019. This past year, we contracted with an independent engineering firm. We have all those three bids, those three vendors offering solutions. Of those three vendors, there's four solutions that were offered. One was a company named Codan, and they offered to replace exactly what we have today with a brand-new, what we have today, VHF system. K offered a own-and-operate 700-megahertz system, so radio, but a different radio spectrum, in that we would own and operate and build it out. Then Motorola actually suggested that we partner with neighboring systems. And there's pros and cons to every one of these options. So and of course, salesmen do what they do. They want you to buy their products or whatever we can do today to get you to sign the paper. Also, the bids are always low. They look very attractive.
Oh, you overheard me saying before the meeting.
Yes. And so we hired an independent firm to do several things. Their scope of work was to educate themselves on what we have today. Look at our system. Here's all the paperwork. Here's the history of it. Here's where our sites are. This is the equipment that's there. Here's the maintenance records, blah, blah, blah. Educate them on what we have today. We had them review the RFI, validate process. They took all four potential solutions and reviewed them. Then we asked also for a realistic budgetary number, any one of those four solutions. That's for my board's education, because I can tell you that the lowest bid in that RFI process was 2.9 million. Okay, well, that's a lot of money. That's not reality, because we know we needed new sites. He added, we needed radios. We needed a lot of stuff. At 2.9 would be gone instantaneously. And that quote, in realistically budget numbers, is sort of 10 million. Big difference. And the 700 and the 800 solutions were just similar. So we range today in the budgetary number. They're not real still until we get this drilled down. Somewhere between 10 million and $25 million for this project. Depends on what spectrum you go to, the features and functions that you build on that system. We're not there yet. We wanted federal engineering do all these steps, and then in the end, come back and tell us their independent, non-biased recommendation of those four solutions. What's in our best interest? Not in the best interest of Codan or Motorola. It's in our best interest based on our needs, our topography, our history. So they did. That was presented to the Board of Directors in a meeting on September 23 of this year. From that, obviously, there was follow-up meetings with our user group, advisory committee, the board. And so we did some listening sessions with those groups and had a follow-up meeting with federal engineering on October 18 with feedback from the users, Fire Defense Board. On October 26, we held our advisory committee meeting. And those members provided their input to me, to my board, and they were asking for additional information from federal engineering. They need more education. And there's some specifics that I'll get into. And then the most recent board meeting for Columbia 911 took place on October 38. And those, those, my input, my intake from the user groups, agencies, individual chiefs, advisory committee, I gave to my board on the 28th of October, and they echoed that same request. They would like more information. And so what those specifics are, they want to know, there's several things. They want to know better understanding of why was it 20-plus years ago 911 District built out this current VHF-platformed radio system? Whereas today, a 21 independent engineering firm saying, "You should go with 800 megahertz." What changed in those 20 years? Why, why couldn't we have done that 20 years ago? Why are we being suggested? That's a fair question. They want to know the differences between solution that is recommended, which is to partner with the Clark County, Washington's 911 Systems Radio. Why that one versus the Washington County one, which is obviously closer? There's some differences there. And then just more detailed conversation about what it really means to either own and operate your own system, which we currently do, versus partnering with a CRESSA or a Washington County. What are the pros and cons of that? You want more detailed information. So my board didn't meet in November. We combined our November and December meeting. That will be held actually this week, Thursday. So what, after those two board meetings, the advisory committee and the Board of Directors meeting, they were ta, I was tasked with to go back to federal engineering and ask for another work session, a dedicated work session, half-day, all-day, whatever it takes, for them to come back out here and put on this education process for the advisory committee, users, my Board of Director. So I have that quote ready for them for this Thursday. Don't have any doubt that they're going to approve it. Then it'll just scheduling it realistically in January. While my board could make a decision at their January meeting of which direction they want to go, wouldn't be surprised if they'll push that off to February. It's all going to depend on when federal engineering, back here in January, I had a conversation with them this morning. They're on starter blocks, just waiting for the official approval Thursday. Then we'll start scheduling fights and. So no decisions have been made. Don't think they're going to be made in January. They could surprise me, but serve at their pleasure. So that's kind of the high level of where we were, where we are, and where I think we're going. But we'll tell. If I can jump into these questions, if you're, very good. So question one. Do you guys have, you have the question, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So I won't read the question. The quick answer is no to any concerns of these radio spectrums that are being provided by these vendors, the solutions. One's VHF, one's 702 or 800. Those radio spectrums are the industry standard across this country, vast majority of public safety radio systems. I don't think that's going to change anytime soon. That is what everybody's using. There are some one-offs here and there, but dominant is VHF, 7 and 8. So I don't think there's going to be any magical changes in technology regarding radio spectrum. As far as the actual manufacturers of those radios, could they improve features and functions of their system? Certainly, yeah, that, that could happen. Whatever system we end up purchasing will be new. So it'll be whatever's the latest, greatest at that time. If that happens this next year, we'll get P22 model of this box that does all these whiz-bang things. Question two. I think I kind of answered. The entire reason we hired federal engineering was for them to act on our behalf as an independent, non-biased party to look at all of the solutions that were offered, and then to develop their own recommendation as to what would serve us best. And going over the scope, these are the things that we asked them to do. Look at our, our system. Good RFI process. Evaluate for solutions, the vendors, and independently say, "Good, better, best." Their recommendation to partner with the county. And one of my questions to them, which is echoed by multiple chiefs, why the CRESSA system versus the Washington County system, really came down to really just a couple of things. They're in essence the same types of system. Motorola Trunk 800 systems, P25 digital. The difference between the two is it's a lower cost to join onto the CRESSA system than the Washington County system. And he's king, so that's basically the same system, but a little bit cheaper, join onto the CRESSA system. And two, each of those systems, Washington County or CRESSA, have towers, transmission towers, radio towers surround us. It just happens that our county system has more towers that benefit us, Washington County system. And nickels and dimes is what it comes down to. Could we replicate? We partner with the Washington County system and build additional sites, replicate what our county system? Yes, we could do that. It's just money, that comes down to. When a budgetary number that kind of stick in the back of your mind is, we're talking about developing, developing what's called a greenfield site. Nothing's there today, but we're going to build it. You should plan to budget about $1 million per site. Adds up very quickly. Our county has sites that we could utilize by piggybacking onto their system. What that would look like is literally they have a core, brains of their system in a building in Vancouver. They have towers all over state of Washington. They have some even in Oregon. Just like we do, we have towers in, all across Columbia County. We also have towers in the state of Washington. The topography, sometimes it's easier to shoot or bow. So we would be utilizing their core, their brain of their system. We would develop our own sites. Have sites today. We're just retrofitting them with the new radios that's on it. Going to need new sites in addition to what we already have, in addition to what they have. We know that. That's all part of that budgetary process. That's why we hired federal, was to give us independent opinion recommendation rather than relying on a vendor to tell us, "Oh, we have your, we have your solution for you." Yes, sir.
Just a question of clarification. With the Clark County program or dispatch, that is actually infrastructure that is owned and operated through Motorola, correct? It's not the municipality itself?
Manufacturer of the radio system is Motorola.
But then.
Our county, CRESSA, it's specifically, actually owns it, controls it, manages.
So they're not buying into an established network. They're, they're generating their own system.
Our county?
Correct.
Correct. It is their system.
Thank you.
So they, they have other partners, governmental partners on that system also. So CTRAN, the Mass Transit for, I think, that's residing on that CRESSA core.
And I guess a follow-up question. Is it uncommon for intergovernmental agreements across state lines for these types of services to exist?
It's a fair question. We know that there, so one of the advantages, it doesn't make any difference whether it's CRESSA or WACA, is because they are open contracts and they want other governmental agencies to partner with them. Lower's their cost, lower's our cost. It's all good stuff. I haven't, and obviously, we're, all this stuff runs through our legal counsel. Nobody's raised a flag about that at all, but I will make a note to ask that specific question, but I don't think so for this. We have other partnerships with CRESSA today. And not to change gears on you, but Columbia 911 has a regional CAD system, a partner on a regional system. Part of that CAD system is we have a very large, very robust CAD-to-CAD interface that actually encompasses now today 10 emergency dispatch centers on that, on that one tool. And CRESSA is of our partners. So exchanging dollars every day.
Thank you.
In the interest of full disclosure, I've provided legal services for Clark County in the past. And I also represent a jurisdiction in Washington County, so I, we've been part of those conversations. It's extremely unusual to partner across state lines. All of our laws in Oregon for partnering with different organizations, whether it's the city in a special district or a fire district, which is a special district as well, they're done through ORS Chapter 190. And it's, it's Oregon-specific. So if you think about things that are across state boundaries, like the, the gorge scenic area, so that had to be formed using federal legislation. Because if, it, it's what's called choice of laws. So with Washington County and Columbia County, if they were to partner, and that probably, I'm sure has happened in the past, you're under Oregon statutes. And the only question is, would venue be in Hillsborough, which is where their county commission and county courts are, or whether it would be in St. Helens? Everything else is, is essentially the same. Same with the Metropolitan Service District. It's parts of all three counties. You could bring a claim in any of the three counties. But their kind of default is Multoma County if they're going to do something. So you would need, I mean, Washington's contractual, I mean, their, their laws are just different than ours. And they, in some areas, their similar land use, they're similar. Their system was kind of based on ours. But all of that stuff, so like. But all of that stuff, so like the venue, I assume would be Clark County, Washington, it would be Washington laws that would. This, well, maybe it could be negotiated at something else, but it, my experience, and again, I've done work in in both, is that you. Other than like economic development agencies where they might participate with Vancouver. You just don't see governments going cross state boundary because our laws are different.
But I will follow up because I I wrote down that question because it's a good one.
A question, you said independent review by federal engineering, and I don't know well enough, having been in sales where. I was a factory rep and one of my jobs was to pretty much wine and dine engineers so that we could get our products into the master spec. Every engineering firm has what they know call as a master spec, which is the products they like to see in their specs. Is there's a more wide open specing when they spec these products, or is it? Are they known as someone that always specs Motorola or Tate or Odam?
Gotcha.
And it's it's very honest, because I spent a lot of time trying to get my products either written into the specs. As the primary, so somebody else had to battle it, or it gave me the opportunity to. Because I can tell you, when the resellers go to sell it, they're looking at that major spec, okay, that's what they want. And it, I spent years doing that, and so it's to me, when I look at specs, I always think about that, huh? That's what I did, that specific product in there, when knowing full well that what you really want is just performance of the item, not. You know, US-made six hundred volt something or the other.
Right, well, there's a couple of things, I think. Touching on a couple of different things, so federal engineering, this is their bread and butter, they do evaluations of systems. Of municipalities, for county, states, everything all across the country, a multinational company. And that's this is what they do, is to be evaluations of systems. They're not gotten to any one manufacturer. But. What federal engineering did for us is just that evaluating our process and the solutions that were offered. Report that they provided us is not a system design. Not a contract, a recommendation. And everything in this report conceptual nature. Does what? If if January or February, my bosses say, go to option B, go forth, sue that option, that is. Great, and our intent is to go into phase two with federal engineering, and they would represent us, they're the experts on this technology. I'm not, even though I've been doing this forty years, and I have managed three public safety radio systems for thirty years. I'm not an expert in all things design of a radio system. Manufacturers are, yeah, that's what they get big bucks for, it's actually designing the system. So, has anybody in here ever bought a home? A home, yeah. Have you ever built a home, had a home built for you? So, if you go to a neighborhood who has model homes, you can go to the model homes, and you can see concept drawings, you can see floor plans. It's not the same as designing in a house and building and seeing a stack of blueprints that go from trade of the lot. All the leveling points to a foundational blueprint. Dimensions and exact measurements to each fact. That's a design, that's not. This is a concept, this is an evaluation of F, we could go to. So, if we go in and my bosses say, go forth and and pursue this option. And these guys will come back and act as our representatives. We negotiate if, whether it's Odam, eight, Motorola, Cressa, Washington County, something else. They're going to be the ones sitting at the table with me as we negotiate those contracts. And then the real, real heavy lift comes with designing new system, whatever that is. So, that design can take six months, nine months, a year, easy. As it gets down to the whoever hits the road. So, what what's the design? Well, it's two things, it's performance, money, but it's performance. So, we want um, coverage, that's what these guys want, that's what the police officers want, that's what the fire guys have been. That's their biggest concern is we need coverage, right? You can do that, yes, ma'am.
And that's that number ninety-five percent that we keep saying, can you?
So, that is our standard, that's our requirement, so while it's a national standard, yes, it is a national standard. Is it a national law? No, but Columbia nine one one is making it a requirement. Any new system that we put in, it'd be ninety-five percent coverage for portable, this is a portable versus a mobile at the hip.
That's something that the design would cover, whether you have to add new towers or.
And where those towers.
Where they're going to go.
How tall the tire tower needs to be, all that is part of the design system.
Guarantee that ninety-five percent.
That's correct. And so, another valid concern that I've heard many times from our users, and it's real, is. There's a fear that. And I guess it's based on experience and other vocations, that if our requirement is we're going to have ninety-five percent coverage. Portable radio at the hip. If you're averaging that across the entire county. Sure, everybody along highway thirty is going to get a hundred percent or ninety-nine percent rocking and rolling, and that means the guys in Miss Burkittfeld and Vernonia are going to be sitting there. Percent. No, we're not doing that, so our intent is to break up the county into zones. I don't know how many zones, because we're not at the design phase yet, but that is our intent, is to break the county up into zones. And each of those zones have to meet those.
Average.
So, we're going to focus on. Population centers, obviously, where people are and pathways, roadways. Are we going to concentrate on where the deer and the antelope live out in the woods? We don't want to spend a million dollars where there's no calls for service. Maybe in twenty years, somebody's going to be in the gas fields of Columbia County, but. We're really focusing where the people are and where they're projected to be growth.
So, if someone is out lost in the woods off the beaten path.
This doesn't mean that there's going to be no coverage, but there are, there will be portions of this county that have poor coverage, absolutely. Some very impressive canyons, county.
Some more.
Uh, Mr. Fletcher, um, I'd like to step back. Everybody hear me, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to step back to the RFI, um, if it's okay with you, on page two, it says, this is a request for information only. This RFI is solely for information and planning purposes, it does not constitute a request or proposal. An invitation for bid or a promise to issue an RFP or an IFB in the future. This request for information does not commit the district to contract for any supply or service whatsoever. Further, the district does not at this time seek and proposals, and it will not accept unsolicited proposal. Rest of parties are advised that the district will not pay for any information or administrative costs incurred in response to this RFI. All costs associated with responding to this RFI will be solely at the address of parties' expense. Not responding to this RFI does not preclude participation in any of future RFP if any is issued. If a solicitation is released, companies replying to this RFI will be notified.
So, this was, I think you said twenty eighteen, right, a couple?
I wrote the exact.
This is dated on the cover here, January fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
So, after reviewing that, I kind of went back and kind of followed the timeline. After reviewing that, I went and actually looked and read the Motorola uh, response. The Tate response and the Coden response. And um, they even acknowledged that they're not proposals, they even state that in their response. Motorola talks about that they can offer VHS system also. Um, you know, they, you know, offered the whole gamut of technology, right? VHS, UHS seven, whatever you want.
Correct.
Tate does the same thing, and what I what I read was um, they were all saying that we can offer all these things, because it wasn't a proposal, it was basically. It was an RFI, they were responding with what their company can offer, and so they were listing all the different technologies and products that their uh, company can offer. What I've heard said multiple times, not necessarily tonight, is I've heard these responses, these RFIs called proposals, and in fact. Federal engineering calls the RFI responses as well proposals over thirty different times throughout their hundred and eighty-eight or eighty pages. The company specifically said they weren't proposals. The other thing is that I keep hearing is the VHS solution, which is noted as alternative one. I keep hearing that referred to as the Coden solution, but in fact, Tate and Motorola both said that they can do that same thing. I also hear, I can't find that anywhere in federal's report where they say that, where they call it the Coden VHS system. I can't find anywhere in federal's uh, report where they call it a Tate seven hundred system. So, I don't know why the manufacturer names are being associated to the alternatives, because that seems like we are getting into RFP territory. The three-year, you know, the fact that these responses are three years old too. Motorola's came out with new radios, new technology, I mean, we're not just talking about the spectrum, we're talking about now they integrate LTE too, so your coverage can be anywhere that you have cellular coverage throughout the world. Really, um, so you're conceivably, your portable and mobile radio could travel beyond the limits of your own system coverage, because now they have LTE in them, so. There's all these different scenarios um, that match up with what the important, we'll call them things, were that um, the users said that they, that was really important to them. But there's different methods now for accomplishing those things, because we are three years later. So, the 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 three-year thing I struggle with a little bit. But I just wanted to point out, sir, um, that what the RFI said, that it it wasn't a proposal, and we got responses to the RFI that also acknowledged that they weren't proposals. And we also got responses from vendors that say they offer all these things, it's, they're not just offering, they're not even just suggesting that VHS system or seven hundred, there's. There's um, their their response to information, they they fit exactly what an RFI really is instead of an RFP, which is a completely different animal.
Or?
Yeah.
You respond?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, you're correct, it's some RFI. And semantics of what we're calling a proposal solution, a proposed solution from Coden is a VHF system. Should be noted that that's all Coden sells is VHF systems. Eight sells, and Motorola, just like Mr. Miller said, offers buffet, cafeteria, anything you want, it will sell you. They are offering their solution, they propose, is eight is a seven hundred system. Motorola's suggesting an eight hundred system and to partner, not own and operate our own VHF. Not own and operate our own eight hundred system to partner with either Cress or Washington County. So, to that point, you're correct, it's an RFI. And so, that's why we are where we are, we haven't made any decisions. If if tomorrow, the board said, we're interested in VHF. Okay, hey, does that mean we're going to go with Coden? Oh, God, what we're going to do is do an RFP, because there's lots of manufacturers of VHF systems. So, then we would work with federal engineering to write us an RFP based on specifically for this county, what our mission is. They would help us develop an RFP and publish that. If the board said, we want to own and operate our own eight hundred system, okay? We're not going to partner with Cress or or WACA, because the board says they want to own and operate their own system. What we're going to do, publish an RFP for an eight hundred system. So, we're not there yet. Board needs to make a decision, they need education, and that's not going to take place until at least January.
Do.
Could I, could I in aid of clarifying?
Really want to get, we've only got fifteen minutes.
I know, I just, I wanted, it would be nice if we could get, so you're you're going to spec an RFP with a ninety-five percent coverage, and that's what's going to go out? That what I'm hearing, like, I I know there are all these, and I don't know that much about radios, but I know there are three different options, VHF, seven hundred and eight hundred. But what I thought I heard you say earlier is that they were going to decide on an alternative, and and then what I thought I heard now is that. Really what you're doing is specking ninety-five percent coverage in the units and then saying whether it's VHF, seven hundred or eight hundred, that's the RFP that you're asking.
If we go to an RFP, first of all, we want to narrow the field down, not just going to publish an RFP and say, anything goes. We're going to say, we want to look at VHF systems, we want to look at seven hundred, we want to look at eight hundred. And publish it to the universe of manufacturers. And those, in that RFP, we'd be very specific of what frequency band and the expectations for who we're, who we need to talk to. Coverage, performance, maintenance, all sorts of things would be in an RFP. If the board decides in January or February, no, we're going to partner with Cressa, Washington County, that's a different conversation. Those are different contracts, A, with those two entities, either one of them, and then the manufacturer of the radio, which would be. Based on the specs, performance, and maintenance. And that, those ninety-five percent coverages are our requirements. That's just one, I mean, there's a whole list, there's, I don't know how many line items of uh, system requirements that we have that are listed in this, just even in the FE report. Ninety-five percent coverage is just one online item.
I think question number three goes back to the ninety-five percent coverage, just our interim chief touching on there's parts of scappus that. Are are little touch and go right now.
Yeah, so uh, again, so the answer of number three is this is not a system design at all, it's a concept.
But the design you are asking for will give.
Absolutely.
On roads like scappus, Vernonia Highway, Dutch Canyon, et cetera, that we struggle with currently.
That's correct.
Except for those big canyons you're talking about.
And even, there there may be portions, there may be an uh, curve or a bend or a dip on either of those roads that won't have any coverage, it'll be in a blind spot. The the expectation, it's good to have goals, absolutely. My goal would be hundred percent coverage across the entire county. That's not going to happen. Even ninety-five percent in a zone is going to leave areas that have four reception, or transmission. Or no transmissions, no reception.
Is that common in other areas of the state?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, right now, today, Akamas County and Washington County going through a hundred and thirty-five million dollar radio upgrade system. It's a lot of money, and I can guarantee you, it's not a hundred percent coverage across those two counties. We will have that same experience here.
Can I ask a question to someone in the audience? Um, Chief Pritchard, do you find that, I know that you do a lot of. Firework in other parts of the state and in other states, do you find that that is a reality in other areas that you've responded to?
Uh, yes, that is correct, and that's not just with municipal systems, it's also with federal systems.
Will you continue down the questions on the number four?
Number four, uh, so we're talking about a. Don't want to get too geeky here, but uh, BDAs are distributed antenna systems. So, these are uh, technology within buildings to help radio transmissions get in and out. Again, this goes right to construction methods today are much different than they were twenty years ago. So, there are a handful of facilities, buildings in this county that have these distributed antenna systems today. And they're built for our radio system. So, if Columbia nine one one chooses to stay on VHF. No harm, no foul, those buildings have BDAs in them, are going to stay there, and life goes on. If we choose to go to another radio spectrum, seven hundred or eight hundred, those five or six buildings have to retro, have to retrofit those. those five or six buildings have to retro, have to retrofit those BDAs. We're making an commitment that you own Fred Meyer. This is not your fault. You paid whatever you did to put in that BDA system. We're changing our system. That's not on you, that's on us. So we're committing to replace those BDAs that are in existence. As far as every facility having them, we have zero authority to mandate any distributed antenna system in any facility. That actually falls under the umbrella of the Fire Marshal. I'm not a Fire Marshal. Columbia 911 is not the fire department. We own and operate a system, and there's not a radio operator, system operator in the state that has any authority. But I would say that you have far more authority than I do. You guys today could write an ordinance mandating it to your community. It's within your power, not mine.
Would the fire service, fire district trump our authority?
That would be a question for the Fire Marshal.
I'll take a quick stab at that.
Yeah.
The, the answer is no, you cannot write an ordinance demanding that there are BDA or DAS systems installed in buildings. However, the constructional specialty code and the fire code have provisions that allow the fire department or fire districts to require them under certain building conditions. And we have a great working relationship with Columbia County 911 and the building officials. And every large new building in the county has had one of these systems installed in it, and we've started to do some retros in other buildings, but it's situational dependent.
Yeah.
Question five?
Yes.
Alrighty. So the question surrounds, did FE do a engineering or mapping for a P twenty-five digital VHF system? The answer, quick answer is no, they did not. It wasn't in their scope. They were scoping exactly what we were receiving, evaluating. Number six. CAD currently has the ability to ABL map MDCs. That is a fact. Yes, we do. Should the district go to a P twenty-five digital system? That is in and of itself an availability to see ABL GPS data off of radios. And if we go to a Motorola system, our CAD system already has that interface built, so we save you taxpayers a truckload of money, because we don't have to build that or buy that. If we went to a non-Motorola system, we would have to develop an interface from our CAD system to whatever that manufacturer is. It's not a Motorola system. We already have the Motorola one. Question seven. Radios. So Columbia 911 does not own radios or fire departments, police departments, MS services. We have our radios. We know how many we have. And so we have, I think we had three different surveys over the last few years of inventory of the various agencies. Tell me how many radios we have. So when we gave this to federal engineering to, just for a budgetary number, because these things are grossly expensive, we need a realistic number. And so we polled our folks, compared the numbers we got from eye survey, past surveys, and I will tell you that the numbers were not even close. They were very disparate. Everything was off. Okay. Well, I get that. That happens. So my instructions to federal was aim high. This is the highest number we have. Three surveys, add a hundred, and whatever. Just give us a budgetary number, so we have something realistic in what guess is. So in a system design, when we get to that point, regardless of the manufacturer, a step, it will be very intricate. We need to know exactly, because if we're changing bandwidth, district is buying new radios for the agency. So we want to know exactly what we need, the spares included stuff, so. So the numbers that Scappus PD did actually present to us, Chief Miller did give us those numbers. So what's in the report isn't accurate anyway, because none of the numbers were accurate. Estimated high to get a budget number. Number eight.
Radio replacement, basically.
Yeah. So right now, this hasn't been determined. We don't have a hard answer, because we need to know what system we're going to. We're going to stay on VHF. We're not replacing fleet radios for agencies. They already have them. They have today, will work on a VHF system. It's a Motorola, Codan, Tate, or Radio Shack. It doesn't matter. Radios will continue to work. But right now, they, those, each of those agencies own those radios. The district does not. We go to a Cressa or a WACA system, 911 district is going to buy the radios, and we will be responsible for them. We'll have an inventory control over them, and we will guarantee that they're being maintained on an annual basis. That's what we're paying for. Today, we have fleets of radios out there that have never seen a service technician touch in years. We know that. So we want to correct. So that ten-year, again, is just for a budgetary issue. Geo bonds are like your home mortgage. You get a five-year term, ten-year, twenty, fifteen, whatever. It's all gonna come down to what it costs. And we are cognizant of tax feariness. There's, there's a capacity out there of what people are willing to pay. So we want to make it affordable. More than likely, this would probably turn into a twenty-year geo bond. But now that rate, and then that issue is solved, radios, beyond twenty-year. Number ten is a, is a real issue. So the answer is yes and no. A lack in control is real, and we understand this. Either Cress or WACA, to change a site is no big deal to us. We have our sites. If they add a site or their, their system, great, that doesn't impact us. We can always add sites to our own system. If we find that one of the advantages of the Motorola system is if they say, we will give you ninety-five percent coverage, blah, blah, blah. They guarantee it. They guarantee it to the point where if they don't give us that performance, they're responsible to make it twenty-five percent on their dime, not ours. So that's an advantage. You're paying for it, but that's why they're so expensive. But they don't want to be wrong, so they guarantee that coverage. So again, if in the future, in five or ten years, we find that we need to build a new site, that'll be on us, and we would do that. But that, again, that's no impact to change of a system. Both of those agencies, those systems, like I said, the Washington County system is going live in January. So it's not gonna go anywhere for twenty years. They're on a, both the Cressa system and the Washington County system, on a continual upgrade. They prepaid for their system upgrades for a ten-year period, so it's constantly being refreshed. So in ten years from now, it will be as new as it is today, always on a continual refresh. So I'm not concerned about that. I am concerned, and I appreciate folks' sense of lack of control. They made a change to the system. That impact us? Yes. But I've been associated with all three of the eight hundred systems in the metro area for thirty years. They don't make those types of changes where it impacts their users slightly. So it's real, but I'm not greatly concerned about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We need to have a motion to allow for the work session to move into city council meeting as agenda item number one?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys, if we need a little more time to get through this, then yeah.
Just a couple more questions, and I think we wanted to hear from, Richard wanted to make some. You're good.
We have questions for you. Would you be willing to answer them?
Can we, can we write questions down and get them to Chief Richard, or? You have them?
I mean, I can take those if.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we extend the work session to finish out the remaining questions with Mr. Fletcher from Columbia 911 into the city council agenda.
So we're gonna go through the opening of the meeting, and then continue it a few minutes, and then go to the rest. Okay. Why don't we just do that? We, we're not in a meeting, so we can't really make a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna start our council meeting at seven, and when we get to approval of the agenda, we're gonna make a couple changes real quick, and we'll get back to you. Can you stop this? Does that work?
I'm here.
All right. Perfect.
Yeah. I think we have to start the meeting at seven.